Ladies and gentlemen, if I can get you to stand, join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing.
Will you pray with me? Father, we come tonight thanking you for blessings that you've given us. We thank you for the beautiful weather that we've had in this beautiful fall season. We want to thank you for the employees here in the Guthrie area and all the work that they do. We especially want to ask your blessing upon Blue as he retires. We just thank you for his service over these many years and what a heart that he had for our town. And we just want to thank you, Father, for him. We just ask that you be at this meeting tonight, Father, that you be with each council member as they make wise decisions, and we pray for your guidance, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. This Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting is called to order. Community announcements and recognitions. Reverend Hammond, please, sir.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone here, and my purpose of being here today is to officially make an announcement of the 16th Annual General Tommy Daniels Community Thanksgiving Feast, which will be held on Thanksgiving Day, November the 28th. From 11:30 to 2:00, will be held at the American Legion Center here at Radine Guthrie. And we are just privileged to be able to host such an event that provides meals to those who would like to come out and enjoy a wonderful fellowship during this particular time. The admission is free. I want to thank the city for all your support and in the times past. And lastly, as a part of our benefit musical, which will be held Saturday on November the 23rd at First Baptist Church on Broad in Springer, be held at 6 o'clock. And we will be featuring local musicians and gospel singers locally and from around our area. So you all are cordially invited to come and attend. I do have a few announcements, flyers I just want to leave with you all, and hope that you all will be able to attend and be one of our servers as our dignitary servers on our Thanksgiving dinner. So we will be in touch with you. Thank you for the opportunity, and y'all come.
Thank you, sir. Now, if I may, Verdel Blue Smith. If I can get you up here, please, sir. Just like going into boss's office, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right over here, please. Let's see if I can do this right. City of Guthrie, Oklahoma Proclamation. Whereas Verdel Blue Smith has displayed a true commitment and loyalty for his community and City of Guthrie for 36 years, and whereas Verdel Blue Smith was always considerate, thoughtful, and helpful to the citizens of the city, and whereas Verdel Blue Smith has worked for and supported 13 mayors, numerous city managers, and city councilmen in his career with the city, and whereas Verdel Blue Smith contributed largely to many successful city events, including Mumford &amp; Sons', Bluegrass Festival, the 100 Years City Centennial Celebration, and whereas Verdel Blue Smith will be remembered in making our cemetery, parks, and grounds an inviting and welcoming sight to all citizens and visitors in our city. Be it therefore resolved, I, Mark Spradlin, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, am honored to declare yesterday, November 4th, as Verdel Smith Day. Now, one more thing, the people at Public Works, they put all their money together, and Maxine paid 99 percent of it, I think, but they got a small gift for Blue so he could take and remember him all the, you know, what he used to do and all that. We were gonna give you a weed eater for going away for the rest of the night. He got stolen. So if you would like to say a few words, your mic is yours for about 30 seconds.
Okay. I just want to say thanks to the City of Guthrie and for giving me opportunity, and thanks for the citizens of this town, they've been great to me. Thank you. Thanks.
Now, if I can get Jay Hanna up here, and Bill Lehman. The mic is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and to the Mayor and to the Council, thank you for this opportunity to be delegated responsibility of reading the special proclamation for a very special citizen. Deepest thanks to Bill and Rosemary Lehman. Whereas Bill Lehman and his family relocated to Guthrie in the early 1960s so that Lehman could assume management of what was then the Guthrie Daily Leader, and whereas the newspaper was struggling when Lehman became general manager, but soon began to flourish under his leadership, and the leader, the daily leader, won many awards of becoming a highly regarded small-town daily newspaper in Oklahoma. And whereas Lehman was one of the first residents to fully appreciate Guthrie's historical significance and devoted newspaper resources to document Logan County's history and collect important photographs, and whereas Lehman was a pioneer in the efforts to organize historic preservation efforts in Guthrie and to raise the city's profile as a community with an extraordinary collection of Victorian architecture, and whereas related to these efforts Lehman was one of the primary persons, perhaps even the primary person, responsible for the establishment of the Oklahoma Territorial Museum as well as the State Capitol Publishing Museum, and whereas Lehman has been a popular figure around town, known for his involvement in civic organizations and good work. I'm sure that was a typo, Bill. Had to be a typo. Is that you? As well as his sense of humor, his love of art, and his love of music, and whereas Bill and Rosemary Lehman will shortly be leaving Guthrie for retirement in Ada, and now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City of Guthrie that it extends its deepest thanks to him and for his many, many contributions and the indelible legacy that he has left to this city, and that it wishes him and Rosemary all of the best. In testimony thereof, I have therefore caused my hand to move the great seal of the capital city of Guthrie and inscribed it on this date and time, Mayor Mark Spradlin, Mayor of the capital city of Guthrie.
That's just the way I wrote it.
Mayor, we know that there's much business to be had, but I would call upon one of the founding members of the Logan County Historical Society in its renaissance and a former president of the First National Bank of Guthrie, Oklahoma's oldest and coldest, Ralph McAlmont, to step forward.
Mayor and fellow council members you have here, I apologize for my introduction there. Now, that was a great, great proclamation, and I just think every word of it is true, Bill. We are all very, very grateful to you, but I don't want this to get too serious. Bill, I don't think can handle it if we get too serious with it here. Bill also has been responsible for an awful lot of things that have been pulled off in this town. For instance, the Elmer McCurdy caper. Many of you all may not know the true story there, but this happened in his office, is where it occurred. There were a small group of us, about six or seven got together on a January morning and had some snow blowing outside, and we had the irascible Fred Olds there in the group. And Fred was always seemingly such an innocent when he did things, and Bill announced to the people, "Did you all read about this old fellow that they found mummified out in Los Angeles?" And he told us the story, and then Fred listened, and he said, "Well, that is..." And Glenn Shirley then informed us who it really was, that the man, this is Elmer McCurdy, he was sure it was. And Bill says, "Right there, well, you know, that's fine, but Fred Olds spoke..." He said, "Well, I reckon what they'll do with that old feller." And Bill says, "Well, I'll tell you what they'll do with him, Fred." He said, "This is a bunch of Californians, they're gonna take him and burn him up and throw him out there as ashes out in the Pacific." Fred said, "That's terrible, we oughta bring him back here." I could go on, but you all get the rest of the story. I don't know how many such stories can be told that came out of Bill's office. He was fabulous for serving his coffee, and we'd gather on a Saturday morning, and this is when we planned these serious city events that we had. But Bill, we are so grateful for all you have done for our town. There's not enough that can be said. Don Coffin and I went to Washington, DC, and I think, yes, it was in the fall of '74, and in the spring of '75, I asked Bill, we'd gotten permission to write a small 1,200-word article for the National Trust Journal that they published at that time quarterly, and I asked Bill about it. He says, "Yeah, I've just about got it finished," and he brought it over to me. I said, "Bill, they said 1,200 words." You got, you know, he had a theme there, it was huge. And he said, "Well, he just thought that's the way it was," and so I didn't have nerve enough to tell him I thought he made a mistake, and mailed it up, and they published the entire thing, and from that point, Guthrie, which had always been well, well-known in Oklahoma.
There you go.
But Guthrie became nationally known, and we owe it all to this character right here. Bill, we hold you and Rosemary in such high regards, and I won't tell them about your musical career also, but we'll keep a few jokes for ourselves. Mr. Mayor, we thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And we appreciate your allowing us to honor this man.
Mr. Lehman, thank you, sir.
I would like to say that there were many, many people that were involved in the Guthrie preservation, not along with me, but one of the revered ones was Don Odom, and he preached the word about Guthrie. I became one of his students, and there was only one difference, I had a barrel of ink and a printing press, and I had a wider audience, and that's all there was to it. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Now, if y'all want to leave, you're more than welcome. If you want to stay here, then you can do that also. Makes no difference.
So the Billy Bob Bovine van's not singing tonight? Billy Bob's not singing tonight? No.
All right, item number three, consent agenda. I need a motion and a second for approval of item A, please.
I'll make a motion to approve item A at this time.
I have a motion and a second. Council, cast your votes, please.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes, please, and it is unanimous. Thank you very much, Council. Item number four, discussion and possible action to award RFP number 2013-06 for advanced metering infrastructure AMI and automated meter reading AMR implementation services to Utility Technology Services Incorporated and Oklahoma Corporation for their proposal of $1,154,915, subject to approval of final contract.
I'm slightly offended that most people had the mass exodus to leave and not listen to the automatic meter reading proposal, but I'll survive. This project is to replace approximately 3,800 meters within the City of Guthrie, and those are the water meters to go to the smart meter reading system. We issued an RFP in June, opened those RFPs in August, entered negotiations with our top two firms, and a committee selected our firm that we found to be the best fit for the city at the best cost and the overall best benefit to the city, and that would be census. The changing out of all residential and commercial meters should start in approximately February. In between now and then, we will do significant amounts of marketing and an effort to educate our customers of what that means for them. What it does mean for the customers within the City of Guthrie is that they will be able to accurately know what their usage is, and the city will be able to identify peak hours of usage, peak days of usage, and we can avoid high bills for those that cannot afford those $300, $400 surprises, for example, of a running toilet, a leaky faucet, or whatever it might be, and we hope that that benefits our community. Another thing that it will avoid is the perhaps mistakes within meter reading. This is a full-proof system with 20-year warranties on our meters. Staff recommends the approval of a contract pending, pending the contract for approval of census. I'd be happy to accept any questions. I think we kind of beat that.
And we approve that in the next part, right? No, we'll do it next time.
No, you do it now, pending the contract.
Oh, pending the contract? All right, we have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes, please, and it is unanimous for that pending, subject to final contract. All right, item number five, Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting is adjourned. City Council Meeting is called to order. Consent agenda items A through D. I need a motion and a second for approval, please.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, cast your votes, please.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes, please, and it is unanimous. Thank you, Council. Item number three, discussion and possible action to approve the lease purchase of one 2013 International WorkStar 7,000 Series Dump Truck to be purchased under the Oklahoma Statewide Contract and Approval of Resolution Number 2013-22 to finance the lease purchase with SunTrust Equipment Finance and Leasing Corporation at an interest rate of 1.79% for five years in the amount of $135,860 with the non-appropriation clause as required by the Oklahoma state statutes.
Though we will greatly miss our 32-year-old dump truck, we place this item in the budget for CIP. It is the only vehicle this year for the city. At 1.79% interest rates, we opted to lease this. We may keep it another 30 years, but we'll have it paid for in five. We did solicit financial quotes from all banks local. SunTrust is not a local bank, but came in at a 1.79%. Staff recommends the approval of the lease purchase of a 2013 dump truck to be used in the Streets Department.
The one replacing the one with the broken frame? Yeah, that's a lovely one.
It was tough to work with.
Should we just give that to Blue since he's retiring?
Unfortunately, team, we did auction that and sold it on surplus for $852 in July, so we've been without.
I thought we'd just give it to Blue.
We should've. Would've been less than the money, but I know.
All right, for item number three, Council, I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
I have the motion and a second. Council, cast your votes.
Mayor, all votes are in.
Show us the votes, please, and it is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Yes, we can.
Item number four, discussion and possible action to approve Resolution Number 2013-23, supporting the Oklahoma House Bill 1875.
So this one's interesting. There's a House Bill, number 1875. Over the past 30 years, there was an audit performed by some great cities within our state, and what they were looking for is the Oklahoma Tax Commission, currently, they charge cities for the maintenance and the management of taking in our sales tax and then dispersing it. What this audit recognized is that there was a definite imbalance. The state charges cities in between 1% to 1.3%. The bill is actually supported by the Oklahoma Tax Commission, where they realized that they were taking in way more than they were spending, and so that money that the cities should have received over the last 30 years were going to the state. This bill would change the percentage charged to the cities back to a half percent. This is out of the legislative piece from OML, and they've asked the cities to support via resolution in an effort to take that to the House of Representatives and hopefully pass in Congress this next year. Staff recommends the approval of Resolution 2013-23.
Council, I need a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Council, cast your votes.
Mayor, all votes are in.
Show us the votes, please, and it is unanimous. Thank you, Council. Item number five, discussion and possible action on acceptance of Oklahoma Highway Safety Office Grant for federal fiscal year 2014.
Starting in 2002, the Guthrie Police Department had received, had applied for and received grants from the state in an effort to aggressively educate our citizens on wearing a seatbelt. That would be the restraint words that we use here. But we did not receive this grant last year, we did receive it this year. What this $20,000 pays for is the overtime for our police officers to aggressively watch for and educate our citizens on wearing their seatbelts. So I would suggest in the next couple of months, if this is passed, that you wear your seatbelt. So staff recommends the approval acceptance of the OHSO grant funding.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, cast your votes, please.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes, please, and it is unanimous. They will catch you out there. They will find you. Item number six, discussion and possible action to authorize the dispersment of $14,136.86 from the Rural Business Enterprise Grant with that number to Carruthers Holding Group LLC at a rate of 4.5% for a term of eight years to be used to provide improvements to the building facade at 107 East Oklahoma Avenue in the Commercial District of downtown Guthrie to be managed by the Logan County Economic Development Council.
Well done, Mayor. That's pretty much, that's pretty much it.
Any questions?
I'm good. Staff recommends.
I need a motion and a second for approval, please.
So moved.
I'll take that as a second also. I have a motion and a second. Council, cast your votes, please.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes, please, and that is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, number seven, city managers' report.
We'd like to thank the High School Art Department in partnering with the City of Guthrie in an effort to paint our traffic boxes. If you haven't seen them, those would be the large metal boxes that now have beautiful art on them. That was an effort taken on by the High School Art Department, special thanks to them. This week, we'll have a rate and fee advisory committee meeting Thursday at noon. It was moved from last week. On Friday, we'll have our Downtown Improvements Committee at noon also. A reminder to our downtown business owners, some of those Mumford &amp; Sons decorations are still up, and Council was so gracious to allow us a week of moratorium to allow to put that up. That week was gone about a month and a half ago. If we can take those decorations down and decorate maybe and get ready for our winter time, and especially, I know Mary's gonna talk about Victoria and a Walk, and so great time to be planning for that, and wear your seatbelt. That's all I have.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Request or comments from members of the Council. We're gonna start down here with Cheryl, please.
I knew you would. I would like to extend a special thanks to our own Renee Spinato, her sister, and her brother-in-law, for priming all of those boxes so that the art department could paint them. Thank you, Renee.
There you go. Is that it?
That's it.
Mr. Taylor.
I shouldn't take more than an hour. No. I wanted to say thank you to the guys working on the stoplight out on South Division. We'd had some trouble with it, so I personally want to tell everybody thank you for the hard work they did. I know that they had a company come up and put new wiring in it because the other wiring had been shot, so I appreciate that very much, and so do some grumpy people out there, and they were real happy about that. Also, congrats to the Guthrie Blue Jay football team. I know we're not 10-0 yet, but we will be after this weekend, but they are the suburban conference champs so that they will proceed into state, and so as long as they win, they at least get two, I guess we'll get the first two games at home, I guess, as long as we win, so, okay, there you go. And then the band, I believe, placed, was it six, I think?
Six, I think, yeah.
Something like that. I can graduate them as well. And one last thing, we're gonna try to find a pig so some people can kiss a pig.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay, well, anyway, there'll be some people.
Suey.
We have one in the back. Okay, anyway, I will just let this... That's it.
Mr. Ayers, please.
I don't have much tonight, but I will say the territorial race, if you haven't been following it on Facebook, has been getting pretty racy. Been quite enjoyable to check that out, but, you know, just quickly, I can't express enough, you know, Blue's commitment to this great city. It's just amazing. He was talking, 36 years is incredible to me. I mean, that's almost as old as I am, as a matter of fact. I'm kidding, I'm a little older than that, but nonetheless, I mean, 36 years of dedication to this great community, and you just can't say enough about a guy like that. Every time you saw him, just a big smile on his face, and he'd give you the shirt off his back if you needed it, and what a great testament to this community and to him as an individual, so, thank you.
Ms. Coffin.
I got a couple of things. I do want to say that the General Daniels Feast, the territorial writers presented them with the $800 yesterday. They've raised money for them every year, so they gave them $800 to contribute to that feast, so I just want to recognize them. This weekend, we have the Clemix Bad National Finer still steer roping at the Lazy E Arena starting on Friday, Friday and Saturday, that's usually a big event. On Saturday, we have our art walk that will happen in the downtown area between 4:00 and 9:00. Monday is Veterans Day, so there will be a parade starting at the Territorial Museum, and it will continue on down to Honor Park. That begins at 10:30 in the morning on Monday. On the 26th, we have a grudge match bake-off with a couple of bakers here in town. They're actually gonna provide lunch for everyone, and I think the mayor will probably talk about this too, but it's a, they're actually helping with the shopping with a police officer fund, since I can't say shop with a cop anymore, I'll make up something. But all the funds that they make from selling their desserts for $5 will go to all the kids here in Logan County, so the funds will be split between that and the youth shelter. The next day, on the 27th, we hope to have all the territorial governors get together to, they're gonna have to prove that they're worthy of being a territorial governor. There will definitely be some activities for them to do that morning at 9:00. There could be some goats involved, too, so you never know what's gonna happen, but we'll definitely have something going on. The location is, just keep your eyes on the website, Facebook. We always have a race for the territorial governors, and they're having a race, but this will be a different kind of race that they'll have. And then the announcement will be the following Saturday, when we will have our lighted Christmas parade, we're gonna light the town and the tree, and so the announcement for the territorial governor will be that evening. The parade starts at 6:00, so everyone is welcome to come out and enjoy the parade. It should be a really nice parade this year. And that's it for the month, and then we go into Christmas, we got a lot of Christmas stuff going on, too. We'll talk about that the next meeting.
All right. Mr. Wood.
I don't much, but I'll say, you know, repeat that Blue is a great asset to the city. city. Yeah, it blows my mind, working anywhere for thirty-six years, you know, so he's been great. I worked with him on the park board, and he was just always there and always, you know, just always going beyond and above beyond what he should be doing even, so. Again, that territorial governor's race, I think I've seen more of Phil Nichols and Justin Fortney I've ever watched. You don't want to see these pictures on Facebook, I tell you, oh my gosh. Shocking every day, I tell you, but anyway, it's fun to watch, and we'll see what else comes up.
Disturbing.
All right. On the territorial governor race, you know, somebody's gonna go to jail, that's all there is to it. It's gonna happen. But I'm gonna give you fair warning, for those of you that are out there, it costs you a dollar to vote, and if you choose not to vote, you will be a nominee next year, and the same pictures will be posted on...about you on Facebook.
Where you'll be twerking with Phil.
Mayor, can you mention one, where would you vote, and then where this money goes to?
Where you're gonna vote is almost any store downtown. There are gonna be cans out there to put your money in, put the ballot in, whatever, a dollar a vote, costs a dollar, so whatever can you put it in, they get a vote. You can vote as many times as you want, you can vote for as many people as you want, and this money is gonna go to help the territorial Christmas pay for all the decoration, the lights, and everything downtown, all the upkeep that it takes, these living windows and all this stuff, everything that goes on in those two big weekends, that's for them. Now, our special nominee, number five, is Ellen DeGeneres, and if she comes into playing, you know, she brings her pocketbook, she may win. So, you know, at that point, some of that money would go to the kids, and that's fine, you know, we can handle that. So it goes downtown to help with the territorial Christmas, so that's what it's for, all right? My apologies that it's not as revered and respectful as it has been in the years past.
We apologize.
Again, for Blue, we want to thank him for his time. He will be back, he can't stay away from here, he's gonna...he'll be out there talking to Maxine every day, you know, so he'll be back.
He would have to apply.
Yeah, he'll have to reapply for a job or something, but somebody needs to put him to work. November 26th, Tuesday before Thanksgiving, free lunch, 11 to 1, pinto beans, navy beans, some chili, cornbread, all of it homemade. Desserts are $5, that's how we raise the money. It goes to Shop With a Policeman, Shop With Whatever They Want to Call Themselves, and the other half to Logan Community Services, all the kids, and it will all be spent at Walmart, so it stays here in town, so it helps them out. So come on out, there will be plenty of desserts, we got a lot of people helping out. If you want to volunteer to do a little work out there, that's fine. A lot of the territorial governor people will be out there judging the contest between two people to see who can bake the better dessert, so that will happen there. Okay, item number nine, consider approval to convene in the executive session pursuant to authority of title 25OS 2001 is no longer needed. Item number 10, Randall, if you'll talk to us, please?
10 and 11, Mayor, actually, there's been a lot of happenings in our ongoing litigation the last couple of weeks, and the initial petition case, item number 10, you remember, we prevailed at trial in that case, and Judge entered an order on October 3rd in our favor. Advised by Mike, the Guthrie News Leader, my inside source, at the Supreme Court, that a court...that a petition for appeal was filed yesterday, which was the last day to file that. I've not seen it yet, so I can't really comment on it, but I'm not too surprised. And then, if you want to do number 11, Mayor, I'll do that one.
Number 11, consideration of action regarding Logan County Rural Water?
Neither one of these need any action, I'm just giving you an update. In Rural Water, two things have happened, as you know, the federal case, we were supposed to start selecting a jury today. Judge Russell told us last Friday or thereabouts that we're gonna be kicked off this trial docket and put on the April docket, so unfortunately, we're not gonna get that resolved this month in trial, hopefully will be in April. And then you'll also recall the state court action, where Rural Water also sued us in state court to compel us to sell them water, potable water. We prevailed in that case and received a $286,000 judgment for fees and cost. The Court of Appeals last week affirmed that ruling for us, so that judgment is good. And even better yet, they said it has to come back to trial court because we're entitled to attorney's fees also for defense of the antitrust cause of action that they filed against us, and we weren't allowed that at trial court, so we're gonna get some more attorney fees in this case. The sad part of that is, I don't get any of it.
Uh-uh.
But that's an update of initial petition in all the Rural Water litigation.
All right, since we didn't go to executive sessions, any other comments or questions from council? Anything that...
There's cookies and punch out there, please eat it, all of it.
Or I'll take it tonight, I'll take it home.
All right, we are adjourned.